At 6:34. Please sign into the attendance sheet, which is linked in the chat. Our interpreters are calling in on a separate line. And Spanish interpretation can be accessed at 347-966-4114. Conference ID number is 478-343-316. And could the interpreters please interpret that?
Yes, thank you. Si usted necesita interpretación al español, la traducción simultánea se llevará a cabo en el siguiente número telefónico, Ingresen el número de conferencia, 478-343-316. Símbolo numeral. El número aparecerá en el chat también, al igual que el formulario de asistencia. Gracias por llenar sus datos. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna call the roll. Camille Cazaretti is on her way, unless she has arrived. It does not appear that Camille's here yet, okay. Antonia Ferraro, yes, I'm here. Tia Schelstedt.
Here.
Bess Abrams.
Here.
Kimberly Scott.
Here.
Katia Rembert.
Present.
Claudia Lechuga.
Present.
Mark Bizzard. Mark Bizzard. Yvonne Banda. Yvonne Banda. And Crystal Kason. Crystal Kason. Okay, maybe some folks will show up later. So, thank you all for coming to the District 15 Community Education Council meeting tonight. We appreciate your time and we're glad you could join us. For those of you who are new to CEC meetings, there are 32 CECs throughout the city plus four citywide councils. Each CEC represents a community school district and each is made up of 11 volunteer members, nine of whom are elected by PTA leaders in the district. The remaining members are appointed by the Brooklyn Borough President. CEC 15 is a state mandated public body responsible for ensuring that public school parents and the public have input in educational decisions that are made at the school district level. Our council reviews education policies and advocates for high quality education that benefit all of our District 15 public elementary and middle school students. There are 35 elementary and middle schools in District 15. CEC members serve in an advisory role on education matters to the district superintendent, the chancellor of the Department of Education, and elected officials. We approve school district zoning lines submitted by the Department of Education. We evaluate our district superintendent. We review the district's educational programs and we support school leadership teams. We also submit recommendations for the School Construction Authority's annual capital plan, which we will be talking about today. In conjunction with the DOE, we hold joint public hearings on proposals affecting schools in our district. Currently, we are working with the DOE to collaboratively and effectively rezone seven schools in subzone three. We actively seek input and feedback from the public and encourage you to visit our website, cecd15.org. Take a look at our Facebook page and write to us about any issues you may want to address or learn about. All of our names and contact info are available on our website. And before I hand it over to our parliamentarian for the teleconference protocol, it's just a reminder to please sign into the attendance sheet. Thank you so much. Katia?
Yes, thank you. Teleconference protocol. Due to COVID-19 health crisis, CEC 15 will be practicing social distancing. We will be conducting meetings through teleconferences until further notice. Tonight's meeting will include a public comment period so that we may allow for additional feedback from our school communities. The general rules of engagement. For your own privacy, we ask that you turn off your camera and please use audio only. Please also sign into the Google Doc link in the chat. When you comment, please respect the privacy of others. Please do not include children. Please do not include the names of children or staff. The public comment period is meant for comments. CEC 15 wants to hear your comments and concerns and help you get them addressed as needed. When answers cannot be given in session, we will provide them in our weekly e-blast or in an upcoming meeting. Please sign up for CEC 15 emails at cec15@schools.nyc.gov. Public comments. If you want to comment, please identify yourself by using the raise hand feature. If you are calling in, press star nine to comment. We will call on you by the last four digits of your phone number. Speakers will be called on one at a time and will be allowed one minute for each comment. Speakers will be prioritized from the sign-in sheet via the chat or by emailing cec15@schools.nyc.gov prior to the meeting. We will hear as many speakers as time allows. If you prefer not to speak but would like to still submit a question or a comment, please write to us at cec15@schools.nyc.gov. It is possible that not every question will be given time. So the best way to get your answers, your questions answered, is to always write to us at the CEC. Please remember to sign into the sign-in sheet that's in the chat.
I'll turn it over to Camille.
Hey, everyone. Good evening. Welcome and thank you for coming to this special session meeting. Tonight, our guest speaker is Tamara Smith, the Community Relations Manager for External Affairs at the New York City School Construction Authority. We're going to hold a site selection hearing and learn about a site that the DOE has acquired on Fort Hamilton Parkway between 40th and 41st Street on the southern side of District 15 in Borough Park. A former Catholic school, St. Catherine of Alexandria, was closed in 2005 and the parish convent on the adjacent property were both demolished in 2019. Tomorrow, we'll be explaining how this site will be used in District 15 and for going forward. And we will be taking comments for the floor, as Katia said. You may also send your comments via email. After the site selection hearing, CEC 15 members are going to be getting an overview about the SCA capital plan and how it relates to our responsibility as CEC school liaisons in creating a priority list. Tamara, welcome. The floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Camille. Hello, everybody. It's great to see you after all this time. Thanks so much for having me tonight. Can everyone hear me? Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Great, thank you so much. So, as Camille said, the first part of this meeting will be a discussion about a new site. And again, I'm Tamara Smith from the New York City School Construction Authority. And this site was, actually hasn't been acquired yet. We're in the middle of a process. Acquisition can only happen after this whole process is finished. So where we are right now is called the public process, which is part of this whole long procedure we go through before we acquire a new site. So what I'm gonna do is share a screen with you. Hopefully, everything will go well technically with a very, very short presentation. This is a presentation really meant to focus on the site itself. Keep in mind, there are no programs yet for this school. There's no, you know, admissions policy yet. None of those things have been decided in any way and that would come much later. And that's for the DOE to discuss and discuss with you all and other parents and kind of plan all of that. But this is to focus on the site itself, okay? So I'm gonna start by sharing my screen. And here we go. Just please let me know if you can see it. I'm gonna start the slideshow from the beginning. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. All right, so this is all of you. So I wanna first go, just gonna move a little box around, over the process itself and what we're proposing to do. We're proposing to build, as Camille was saying, a new approximately 475-seat middle school in District 15. It's around 21,000 square feet and it's located on Fort Hamilton Parkway between 40th and 41st Street. The site is currently owned by the diocese and it's vacant. As Camille mentioned, there had been a church which the diocese demolished last year or two ago. So what we do is post a required notice of filing in the City Record and the New York Post, which we did a few weeks ago. And we invite you to hold a hearing and a committee board. And we invite comments during a 45-day comment period. So it started October 21st and it will go through December 4th. And any questions or comments you have tonight are welcome. And anything you think of in the next few weeks, please send comments by email to sites@nycsea.org or you may mail them to our address. Give it mayor attention, Gail Mandaro, who is our Director of Real Estate Services. And just a quick look at the map there. You'll see the site with the star right on Fort Hamilton Parkway. And that's it, really. You know, your comments come now. I will say that the decision to make it a middle school came from feedback from the CEC, from parents and the DOE Office of District Planning. And so that's how that was decided. And it was months ago, right before the coronavirus shut everything down. So we're really, really glad to have this hearing and start to move along in our process. The next thing we do after this set of discussions and the comment period ends is that we bring the site before the City Council Subcommittee on Land Use. And if they approve the site, it moves on to the full City Council. And if it passes there, goes to the mayor. And then we can acquire the site finally. So this is my name and contact information, our website, the link where you can see the five-year capital plan, and then this address here where you can always send additional sites that you may see in your community. So that's it and happy to take comments and questions.
So let's start with the public comments or questions. Katia, would you run that, please?
Yes.
I'm gonna just pause the share.
So far, I'm not, again, please, if you would like to ask a question or to state a comment, well, to state a comment, please use the raise hand feature.
I'm always here. If you think about me and this site at any time. I know there's a lot on everybody's mind this week. This might not be top of mind.
Well, I guess we could just go to council questions. I guess I have a question, if I may go first, parliamentarian.
You may, yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So, back when the site was first kind of a talking point, it was proposed that it would be an elementary school. And I guess this site is very close to PS 131, right?
Yeah.
And...
Yes, it's two blocks away, I think.
Yeah, so they are very, very, very full. I remember back in the day when I was their school liaison and I'd been there a number of times. And they have a very active parent community and wonderful teachers and staff and incredible principal then and new principal now. But they are definitely overcrowded. And, you know, there also was like a conversation about how it was gonna be very difficult to get a lot of school seats out of the footprint for this property and so that it, in many ways, made more sense to use it as an elementary school. I don't remember who or when the feedback came about why not use it as a middle school. I know that our middle school enrollment is increasing as the students are getting older. You know, Office of District Planning had talked to us a lot about that, that we're gonna see increases in middle school seat, you know, enrollment in the coming years. So I see how MS makes sense, but I just wanna like ask if you have any thoughts about PS 131. And then also to bring up the fact that it would be great if we could find a way to do some inclusion classes for families that are in the D-75. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Camille. Well, you're correct. PS 131 has been overutilized for some time. But the funding is, the funding need in that district where the funded need of seats for that subzone actually could have been, as you say, directed toward elementary or middle school. And our first thought last year was that it might be best as an elementary school. Not just because for PS 131, we tend not to focus on solving an issue for one school. We do have to look at the entire subzone and solve for seat need in the entire area. That's how we look, not at a full zone but at the subzone level. And so there were needs, just as you're saying, for both, for elementary school and for what we've been seeing. And the Office of District Planning has presented this a few times, as you mentioned. The sort of bump that's gone through the elementary grades is now arriving very soon at the middle school level. So in order to get in front of that, we thought that, I guess the feedback came, I wanna say, at a February meeting. And the Office of District Planning really thought that it was worth having the conversation before the decision was made. So since, as far as the SEAs concerned, the funding could go to either one and solve important problems. After the discussion was had between community members and the Office of District Planning and the superintendent, those factors all seemed to come together to say middle school would also be a great thing. In terms of D-75, there is a D-75 component planned for this new school.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Or comments?
I have a question just, I'm sorry.
Bess, do you want to ask a question?
Yes, thank you. It's just follow-up to something you just said. The D-75 space that's proposed, is that middle or elementary school?
Middle.
So both will be middle. Okay, thanks. Thank you. Sorry.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
Camille, I'm not seeing any questions in the chat or any raised hands. So any council members would like to, would you do a roll call or?
So I think it's really just Antonia, Claudia, and Kimberly. Oh, and Tia, right. Yeah, roll call, fine. Thank you.
Antonia?
I don't have a question.
Tia?
A question.
Kimberly?
No questions.
Claudia?
I do have a question and just sort of in seeing the history or at least in the district, some of the other archdiocese leases, are there any logistical things that are unique to that space that would need to be dealt with as part of the agreement with the acquiring of the space? I'm just thinking in reference to like 516, for example, like the utilization of outside spaces or additional scheduling. Are there any other special considerations that will be taken into consideration for this space?
Luckily, two things. One, we're actually buying it. And two, it's a vacant lot. So no, no restrictions at all. It will be, it will belong to the SCA. It's not a lease. And so, you know, the only restriction is that it's 21,000 square feet and, you know, the usual puzzle pieces of putting together a good plan to house a school of this size. But no, we are actually purchasing this spot, so none of those restrictions will exist.
Great, thank you. Sorry if I missed that earlier.
No, no problem. That's a good question, because you're right. We often do lease. It's not often that we get to purchase, so it's a good thing. Any other questions?
Doesn't look like we have any. Did Mark join?
And I'm, it's Bess. I'm on. I have a question.
Sure, go for it.
Okay. Sorry, I'm not even have my screens up. Can you see me? Anyway, doesn't matter.
Yes.
I can't see. Oh, I can see. I can. Who knows? So I guess, just was wondering if you could share a little bit if any, if any thought had been given to like the flexibility of the use of space. So especially now that we've had this COVID thing, you know, where we need larger spaces for smaller things. But given the fact that you do have like a purchase power, you know, you're gonna buy the lot in this building, in the process, is that folded in?
Do you mean a space for social distance and that sort of thing?
Well, like people talk about like environmental architecture, creating a school where when you have a lot of little kids, you can do what little kids needs. And when the school grows, you know, flexible walls, that kind of like innovative thinking about the space use. Because we have changing needs, right?
Sure.
It's just, I wondered if it got into the equation.
Well, you know, right now, nothing's been designed. And, you know, we're so at the beginning of this process that when I come to you at this point for site selection, what we have is a site and we have a need, right? And a plan for a number of students and their grade level. There are some differences between design for elementary and middle school, most notably, for example, science labs, which are very specific in middle school and have, you know, that black top and the three-tiered piece desks and the gas jets and all that. For example, those are required for middle school but not for elementary. The gym is larger. You know, so there are things that are very specific to middle school that would have to be brought into the design and so, so many required elements. But within that, yeah, I mean, there can be, you know, and have been many, you know, beautiful and creative designs, but that really hasn't started yet at all. So, you know, we'll see. And of course, life has changed quite a lot since February. So, you know, and as an agency, just like everyone else, we're beginning now to think about those things that, you know, none of us thought about a year ago.
Right.
And have ever thought about in our lives.
That was, I was leaning towards us to talk about more communal spaces for cooking and gardens and, you know, there's ways to enhance community. But thank you for your report. I got you.
Yeah.
You know, I guess I do have a question. This is Tia. I was hoping, this is kind of a more general question, if you could share a little bit about your timeline and the process, particularly, you know, your relationship with district planning. So is there a sort of standard, okay, first we have this, you know, CEC presentation, then we go back with district planning? Like, is there a set number of meetings where, you know, what are the steps in the process?
Right, so the steps in the process, this is one of the very first steps. After the 45-day comment period finishes, we then go in front of the City Council Land Use Subcommittee who present this to them. Meanwhile, by the way, before I've come to you, there have been lots of discussions with ODP already and with the superintendent. And so it is with their feedback and support that we come with this proposal to you all and to the City Council. Once the Land Use Committee hopefully approves this plan, it goes in front of the full City Council. And then when the City Council approves the plan, hopefully, it goes to the mayor. And the mayor signs off and it becomes a real viable opportunity for us to, you know, finish the negotiations with the diocese. Then we purchase it and we can then move into the process of design, which takes about a year generally for something this size and two to three years for construction. So that's really the most general timeline I can give you right now.
I guess I was more, yeah, interested in the community input aspect. You know, over the year, you know, over the one year of design, there are various opportunities for community input, right?
Right. I mean, what I generally do is several times I'll come before the CEC and show plans, floor plans, take comments. Yeah, so that's an ongoing process. It's not a set number, but yeah.
It's not a set, okay.
I don't know, it's not a set required number, but we always do it because obviously it's important to come.
Right. I do ask because that's something that has come up over the year, over the past year, community members wanting to give input.
Camille, you have another question?
Yeah, I do. Thank you. Tamara, just, you know, kind of thinking back to the idea that the site is not as grand square footage as maybe we would like for the sake of, you know, a decent-sized middle school. Like that's kind of a small-sized middle school, right? And because it doesn't look like the city has a lot of money right now in the budget.
Right about that.
What are the chances that ECF takes over this project and we end up with another skyscraper and, you know?
The chances are none. That's not how it works at all. So please don't worry about that. That's not, our processes are very separate. ECF is not part of the SCA. This is going to be an SCA project. The SCA only builds schools. Now, we have built some schools that are already part of developments that are planned. You know that. But ECF leverages already-owned DOE property in a completely different way than we do. So, no, this is, this is an SCA project.
Okay, thank you very much.
Are there any other council members that have an additional question? Camille, shall we move to the next item on the agenda? Over for you?
You know, I don't know if Kelly wants to say. You know, I, I don't know if Kelly wants to say anything at all. Kelly, I invite you to speak if you'd like to say anything on behalf of Anita. I know she couldn't be here tonight, I don't know if anybody mentioned that earlier. I was a little bit late getting on the call, but I, um...
Yeah, no, no problem, no. I, I don't really have much to say about it except for that, you know, it's always exciting to start talking about a new school, both to alleviate stress in the, in other schools, but also to think about the possibilities. So, I'm here to, I'm here in Anita's place, trying to, trying to live up to her, her position and taking, taking some notes for her, so.
Well, thank you for being here and thank you, thank you for speaking.
No problem.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess if, if nobody has any other comments, we can move on to the next session. And Tamar, I thank you so much for the site selection, hearing part of this and answering the questions. And yes, it's going to be very exciting to have another school.
Okay, so, Camille, should I just move on into the next section?
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Sure. So, each year, Camille and I have this discussion where she invites me to just go over some aspects of the SCA's capital plan. This is, I think, particularly valuable, I hope, for new council members, but certainly for anybody who is interested in, you know, how we kind of, how, how projects, I say it's like SCA 101, how a project in a school becomes a capital project. And so, since the CEC has a, you know, some responsibility for making a priority list, as Camille mentioned, this is something that I think generally educational, but also hopefully some guidance to how you come to prioritize projects with schools, of course. Okay, so, this is what I will do, go through this presentation. Any very specific questions about specific schools I may not have off the top of my head, but I'll try to answer. But I, I'll take notes and, you know, answer anything that I can answer tonight and get back to, to Camille and the CEC. Okay, so I'm going to share something new. And there we go. Let me know if you can see that or no.
No, it's not yet. I still see the last screen you had, Tamar.
Yeah, okay. I'm going to close that up and hopefully. Okay, so I'm just going to try to share. Not happening, huh? All right, just give me one second and stop this. Share. Okay, let's try it again. Still no?
Perfect.
Yeah?
Got it.
Okay, terrific. All righty, I'll start again with the slideshow. I'm getting a, you're binging noise, hold on one sec. Okay, there we go. All right, so hopefully I'll get that as a full screen. Does everybody see that? Yep. Okay, great, thank you. All right. Get to the first page. Okay, so, all righty. Sorry about that. Okay, okay. So, the New York City School Construction Authority cites, designs and builds new schools and addition, oh, sorry, additions and handles major capital improvements in existing buildings. The SCA is not part of the DOE, but was created in 1988 to focus on capital projects in New York City public schools and building new schools. So, today I'm going to focus on the capital projects part and not the capacity part of the capital plan. The New York City Department of Education's Division for School Facilities, or DSF, handles day-to-day maintenance and repair of school buildings. So, these are each school's custodians, central DSF staff and their contractors. The agencies are separate, but we work together very closely to maintain existing school buildings. So, one important thing to share is that we operate on five-year capital plans. So, the newest one, the one we're in right now began last year, the school year 2020, in July 2019. And this is the fiscal year 2020 through fiscal year 2024 plan. The capital plan contains information about our goals and our priorities for the next five years, including what we call the Capital Improvement Program, or CIP, in existing school buildings. Another important piece of information is that the capital plan is a dynamic document. Projects are added in twice yearly amendment processes every year. So, when it's first written, when it first begins, it is not set in stone. Money is allocated, but we know through many years of experience that we set out the funding and then through our processes across the years, we add in projects all the time. So, in February and November and normal years, and I think it will still be this year, as building conditions are assessed, elected officials fund projects, sites are found for new schools, laws for mandates change, projects are added. And the amendments are brought before the city council and the mayor for approval twice a year, November and February and November usually. Okay, so typical SCA CIP projects include upgrading and repairing major systems in a building. So, the really huge, major parts of every building. I always say, when you see a building swathed from top to bottom with nets and scaffolds and bridging, that's probably us doing a really big project in a school. So, some examples are brick replacement and repointing, window replacements for a whole school, repairing, replacing roofs and parapets, interior projects that we very commonly do when we install new boilers, HVAC systems, fire alarms, public address, electrical systems and so forth. The SCA capital plan also includes funding for facilities enhancements for academic needs, science labs, libraries, auditoriums, PE spaces and the like. So, how does an issue at a school become a capital project in the SCA's five-year capital plan? There are several routes, all moving along concurrently. And here they are. One of the major ways is through what we call the Building Condition Assessment Survey, or BCAST process. So, the SCA assesses every single school in the city in a yearly BCAST survey. What we have is a team of architects, engineers and others at the SCA and visit every single public school building in the whole city, accompanied by the custodians and principals. We survey every aspect of the physical plant from roof to basement. And every section of the building receives a rating from one to five. It's likely that buildings, that elements of the building that are rated a four or five may be considered for a capital project. But also remember, we have 1,400 buildings across the whole city, so projects do have to be prioritized. And BCAST reports for every school building are available on the DOE's website, on each school's page under reports and then facilities. And the facilities is the BCAST report. So, you can look up your own child's building and see how certain elements are rated for the year. And it's quite an extensive report with photos and diagrams and narratives, very thorough. So, DSF custodial engineers handle day-to-day maintenance in school buildings. So, if repairs needed, a room needs to be painted, there's a leak somewhere, a broken chair in the auditorium, these are not considered capital projects. These are repairs that the custodian or other DSF staff can mostly handle. There are also small construction projects and DSF has its own contractors. But if DSF determines that a needed repair is very large, complex and costly, it'll often be referred to the SCA for an assessment. If the SCA determines there's a large project that will need to be undertaken, it may be considered for a capital project and added into the capital plan. So, another way that projects are considered are emergency issues. For example, if there's a big storm one day and the custodian arrives to find a piece of masonry has blown off building, these are handled right away. We take safety precautions immediately. Bridging may be installed around the school to protect people. DSF, the custodian will investigate the situation, find out what caused it, see if they can do a repair. Sometimes it's a quick fix, other times the, there's an underlying, you know, larger problem revealed and we will take that as a capital project. Another way is your rezaway and participatory budgeting project. These are projects funded by the city council members and borough presidents most often. Depending on the scope and cost, these projects are handled, if they're smaller ones, by DSF or by the SCA. We construct the very large projects, total renovations of big spaces, auditoriums, libraries, gyms, playgrounds, et cetera. The funding from the elected officials is added into the capital plan. So, what you'll see in the amendment process is not only projects being added, but money as well. So, normally as the, as the plan moves forward over the five years, it, it grows. That's what has happened in the past. Before projects are chosen, we recommend that schools and city council members contact us and get some idea of what things will cost so that they can be realistic in their, their funding. Okay, and mayors, there are citywide initiatives that become part of the capital plan. Examples of two current ones are the PE for All Mayor's Initiative, where gym spaces being sought for schools. And, excuse me, the SCA is currently constructing standalone gyms for nearly two dozen schools around the city right now. And we are working on another mayoral initiative, the air conditioning plan, where all school classrooms will have air conditioning by 2021. In case of citywide initiatives, funding is approved by the mayor and city council and added to the plan as well. All right, and here's where you all come in. Each year, CECs work with schools in the district to prioritize school projects that could become capital projects. CECs fill out a form with at least five top priority projects and submit the form to SCA capital planning, usually at the beginning of January. We think that that will be the case this year, but there's a lot that's in flux still, obviously. But we believe that that will remain the case. It's important to recognize what kinds of repair and renovation projects DSF will handle inside a school and what the SCA handles. Remember, very large systems, it's not necessary to request a major capital project for routine repairs in a school. And so, what we are happy to do is give advice to you and DSF, your deputy facilities manager is a great person who's done this in the past, sat down with the CEC, gone over the list and kind of let you know what DSF will do and what the SCA may handle. And so, you can kind of whittle your priority list with the schools down to a, you know, small number. And then the capital planning looks at that and, you know, considers whether it can be a capital project. Yeah, so, so that's another way. And looking at the capital plan, what is also extremely educational in terms of what is already planned for a school. So, something you may see and be concerned about may turn out to actually be in our plan. So, going over the capital plan yourselves is, is a great idea. And so, what I've done here in the next page is actually showing you, so the question, where can I see the capital plan and the projects in my district? So, the five-year capital plan is on the SCA website, as I'd mentioned earlier. Here's our site. So, you go to the community tab at the top of the homepage and then to a link called Capital Reports and Data, where you'll see the latest amendment, which was February 2020. And you, you will, you know, flip through to District 15 and here's, you know, a typical page. Each year, projects are added, as I, as I mentioned. But for example, you know, you see here PS 261, PS 231, and you know, this is the Bishop Ford old building. So, you know, name some projects, as you see here, this is PS 230, this is a very large project. If I, yeah, you know, this, this is a large exterior modification project, roofs, parapets, masonry, that kind of thing, very big. And then there are some that are little, small ones. This is a playground that's actually being created right now at the Bishop Ford campus. It's almost finished. It was delayed by COVID, but we started up again in the summer and it'll be done fairly soon. So, you, you can see the kinds of things that are already in the plan and that are coming down the pike. On some pages, you see, these are all 2020s, but some pages you actually see a list where, you know, you'll have 2021 projects and a 2022, so you get an idea of what's, what's being planned. And that's it for now. Happy to take questions from anybody on what I've presented.
I have a question. Camille, did you have a question? You want to go first?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to thank Tamar so much because she has been doing this sort of mid-year presentation with us for, I think this is like either the third or fourth year. And it is really above and beyond. It's not something that is part of the DOE mandated structure of presentations and it's just really, really appreciated. So, thank you so much because we do have...
You're welcome. I'm happy to do it.
New members that had come on, like sort of right before COVID happened, so thank...
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you. This was very educational. It's exactly the kind of thing that I want to know about. My question is, does the capital plan also include contributions from PTAs?
No.
What about individuals?
No, the capital plan does not. The SCA does not, doesn't, I guess, I guess, how would I say, it just doesn't deal with those kinds of donations. The DOE does. The DOE has some, has a, I think, a division that, that works with individual donors, but we don't generally see that money and it does not reflect it in the capital plan. And as for PTAs, no. No, we do our work and some individual PTAs, I guess, do smaller projects at individual schools, but they don't become part of the capital plan.
Oh, I see. So, PTAs are allowed to do major projects in schools?
No.
Okay, so...
No, no. I'm just saying, if there was something small, I, you know, I'm not sure exactly what kinds of things you're talking about, but it's, none of that is part of the capital plan.
Is there like a formal restriction?
The work in buildings is done by DSF or the SCA. That's a restriction.
So, a PTA could not...
Well, like if you were doing a Mural, you know, something like that, that, you know, if that's what you meant, that could happen or, you know, put a few, you know, benches and, or build some, you know, build a community garden or something like, raise beds, that would be fine.
Right.
No, no, no major project can be undertaken outside of DSF and the SCA.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, if that's okay. So, I understand that the OB, OMB is holding back even previously allocated funds because of... because of the citywide cash flow problem. And as a consequence, there's a backlog of rezaway projects. And so I'm wondering if you can talk about that backlog and any other delayed projects that may impact District 15?
No, I think I would, I would frame it differently. Not so much that they're holding back. You know, the capital plan is intact so far. There have not been any, there have been no projects canceled, nothing, nothing taken away. Of course, there were many months of delay as construction was paused in April. And since then, let's see, I think the SEA had at the time more than 650 active projects. That means literally in construction at that moment, not even counting design or in the planning process, you know. So even more, if you take all that into account. And so over the months, we've gotten, we get lists of projects, including rezaways, that have been unpaused and approved to move forward. And, you know, we just all have to be tolerant and patient because they will get done. But, yeah, it's, it's been a process. It's been a process since, I guess, restrictions on general construction in New York State, New York City were lifted in, you know, June, July. But given the cash flow issues and all those things, it just was a process of batches of things being unpaused. And rezaway is just one of those things, you know. And that, that affected all the CIP work I'm referring to, our capacity projects, everything. So rezaway is, is in, is in the mix. And, you know, we're getting lists of rezaway projects all the time that are approved to move forward. So that's just great news, and, you know, we'll catch up and just, it'll take time. But, yeah, it's one thing, at least now, at least now, I can say that the capital plan is entirely intact, which is fantastic news. And all those, those projects will get done. You know, there were, there were months-long delays that were, you know, just part of this crazy time we're in. So we're, we're picking up steam, which is wonderful news. And we have hundreds and hundreds of projects now that are remobilizing, including rezaways.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Camille, did you want to ask a question?
Can you give us an update on PS 32 construction?
Well, as you know, Camille, better than anyone else here, we are finished with the addition. So that was, you know, a 2020 opening. One of the, you know, really important processes for us was to unpause the schools that were supposed to be, you know, brand-new buildings or additions opening this September. And that happened in the summer. And I'm going to say I'm, you know, proud of the agency's work as we overcame a delay of months and opened every single 2020 project on time for the original first day of school, September 10. And so, so that's, you know, PS 32's addition was part of that. And then for PS 32, as happens very often in our addition projects, is that we moved on to Phase Two, which often happens inside the existing building. So that's what we're doing now. And that includes a new boiler, includes some renovations of rooms inside the existing building. So, and punch list items, of course, in the new addition, there are always little things that we have to continue doing. So that's where we are now with PS 32.
Great. Does anybody else have questions?
I was just going to reiterate your question on elevator. Is that happening for 32 tomorrow?
An elevator? Well, there's an elevator in the new addition, as you know. If you know that school, there is a small elevator planned for part of the existing building in order to make it accessible. And it's kind of behind the stage in the auditorium. So there's a shaft being built back there. Yeah, so that's happening now.
I did just have a, this is Claudia, a general question. This is agreeing with, mostly because I'm naive to this process. In what you described, major construction that happened, was there any melding of any work that was done or assessments that was done in preparation for opening the schools, like whether their HVAC systems needed, that actually was done in collaboration with you guys or relied on some of the information that you guys collect on your yearly surveys?
I'm sorry, I missed the first part of your question.
Oh, was there any collaboration that melded between SEA and overall DOE efforts in the reopening of schools that would also like maybe muddle some of the capital plan or like what you guys would normally do-
No.
-in your projects? Okay, they're still very separate.
Correct. We did assist with the assessment of ventilation systems in buildings. We were called upon to, it was, you know, only a few weeks were given to do a huge process of, you know, looking into every single room and every single building. So the SEA became part of that. Our folks went out there with DSF and lots and lots of people to get that done very quickly. But it was not, the capital money was not part of that. It didn't come out of the capital budget.
You know, since you brought up ventilation, I know that many schools don't have, you know, have classrooms where the only ventilation is open windows. And I'm assuming that HVAC systems are in the plan for, for District 15, at least for some schools. Is HVAC, you know, a priority considering the virus? And how are you prioritizing HVACs, systems in each school?
You know, I will say that right now, because this is still very new to all of us and to us as an agency, I think those conversations are happening. I know they're happening. But the, and you're right, you know, there are always HVAC, there are HVAC updates, you know, throughout the capital plan. If you take a look there, the section for District 15, you'll see that HVAC upgrades, HVAC installations, that's always a part of our work. But you're right, it's, it's a whole new world, and that may become a priority. Those conversations are just constantly going on, whether, you know, in terms of like designs for new buildings, for example. Do we need to think about that? You know, or existing buildings? And, you know, I can't say whether it's become a priority just, just yet, I'm not sure. But, you know, each amendment that we do, whether it's November or February, you know, occasionally, whole, whole new categories are added. And maybe that will be one, so I'm not sure. But I know that everybody's very concerned about those issues right now. And since we're in the, the business of building and designing, that, that certainly may become, you know, something that has to be a brand-new priority category. I'll have to, you know, we'll really have to see what the amendments show, you know, in the next year. Anyone else?
Council members, any other additional questions? Camille, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Tamar, I cannot thank you enough for your time this evening and answering all of these questions. It is just a great pleasure to work with you, always accessible.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and we will be in touch about our priority list. And see you soon. So we'll, we'll continue-
Thank you so much, everybody.
Questions from the public about the site selection?
Absolutely. And any questions that you think of, I'm always, as you say, I'm available. My email is on the tsmith5@nycsa.org. Please feel free. Anything that I don't know, I will find out for you. I always can promise I'll do my best. So thank you so much, everybody. Have a great night.
Thank you. Tamar, if you would, could send us the presentation document?
Yeah, I'll email it to you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. You too. Good night, everyone.